Order in a moment. Could we please hold comments while SPS TV takes us live? After a five second pause, I will call us to order. This is Director Hampson. I am now calling the board's special meeting to order at 3:30 PM. For the record, I'll call the role. Director Harris. Director.
Director Hampson. Director Harris emailed and said she wouldn't be able to make the work session.
Okay, Director Hersi will be late. Director, hopefully we've got, Director Mack?
Here.
Director Rankin? Director Rankin? Director Rivera Smith?
Present.
Let's try Director Rankin again. Just gonna give Director Rankin another moment.
Yeah, we don't have quorum if we.
Yes, I know. No.
I'm dialing right now. I'm on, sorry. I got totally distracted by my email and just didn't log into the meeting. I'm just sitting here.
Director Rankin?
Yeah.
Okay. The superintendent is also present as well as staff who we're presenting as we move through the agenda. This meeting is being held remotely consistent with the governor's proclamation prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. The public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. To facilitate this remote meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. There will not be a public comment opportunity. Staff will be working to administer the meeting and may be muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear from directors and staff. Today's reopening update will cover three topics. Transportation and the load unload plan, the daily health screening plan and the cleaning regimen. I will hand it over to Chief Operations Officer Fred Podesta now to begin the presentation on transportation and the load unload plan. And before I do that, I just want to caution that when we, in this context reopening, was the start of school for the 2020 to 21 school year. It does not refer to any in-person time. And if we can continue to remind the public of that as we go through, I think it would be very helpful because it does cause confusion. Go ahead, Director, Chief Operations Officer Podesta.
Thank you, Director Hampson. We go to the next slide, please. And Director Hampson went over the agenda and I'll just clarify that, you know, transportation and load unload plan are related, that we're talking about loading students onto transportation vehicles and having students disembark from transportation vehicles. So that's a single subject. I'll cover that. And then Chief of Schools and Continuous Improvement will cover the daily health screening and then return to me to discuss the cleaning regimen, which is about cleaning school buildings. So next slide, please. And we're gonna just go over the health and safety protocols we've put in place for transportation. We are starting to transport students for evaluations for special education in-person services and gearing up to be able to provide those services and provide transportation as needed when students are getting those services in our school buildings. This is a multidisciplinary effort and I really want to extend thank yous to our partners in schools and continuous improvement, particularly the health services staff and also school staff and school leaders and working with staff and special education to figure out how to make this all work in kind of one seamless package for students and families. Next slide, please. So providing these services and making our operations as safe as it can be are very similar and be we're having the same processes and protocols in vehicles as we have in buildings. That we're, we'll talk later in this work session about the health screening, but there'll be a complimentary process that will apply an attestation process for staff that participate in transportation. Staff will wear the appropriate personal protective equipment like we're doing in business, in buildings. Plexiglass shields have been installed and other barriers have been installed between drivers and passenger areas and vehicles. The vehicles will be clean, just like buildings are clean between each service that they provide. Routes and right now, because we are focused on transportation for special education students, which in regular times sometimes have bus monitors riding with students. We are gonna start with a monitor in every vehicle, in every vehicle that has multiple riders just to manage the application of these protocols and to keep learning about how to do this as best as we possibly can. A health and safety checklist has been built by each of our transportation service providers to prepare vehicles after each service for the next round of service to do the disinfecting and reloading any supplies or PPE that will be carried on each vehicle. And then rider, you know, there'll be a handoff process with the load and unload process as we referred to, which will be a handoff to schools for in, to school transportation. And we'd expect riders to stay on the vehicle until we've got staff in place to escort riders into the school building. Next slide, please. So the expectations are again are similar that in the realm of transportation as we have for staff in school buildings, that, you know, we, we will manage the loading and unloading and the transition from students from the vehicles into the building and to participate in any further screening that gets done at the building. Students will be expected to have face coverings and will work on a case by case basis with health services and others for those rare cases where accommodation may need to be required if a student is unable to wear a face mask. An example of that might be a single student will be on a larger vehicle, a yellow school bus to have appropriate distance from a driver and a monitor if needed. Could be an example of an accommodation, but we'd have to figure those out on a case by case basis depending on the students' needs and the circumstances. We would also have an expectation for face coverings for parents or other adults accompanying students, particularly if they're participating in helping load the student into the vehicle. If there's a car seat or other device involved where we need the parents' help, that they would be expected as they're around school staff to, or other students to have face coverings and that parents, you know, will guide their students through a screening process prior to student, a student receiving transportation services. Next slide, please. So we're really planning for two modes of service. Those cases where there'll be a single passenger in a vehicle and cases where there'll be multiple passengers in a vehicle. So the, the procedures for a single student, or there will be exceptions certainly if there are siblings or other students who are part of the same household. They may ride together. A variety of vehicles will be used to provide this, which is true for alternative services at any time. It could be a yellow school bus, particularly if there's a wheelchair lift needed. Could be an alternative service provider that we're using, or in some cases, we may employ district vehicles for single passengers. We're not expecting in the case of a single rider in a vehicle to have any other staff unless the IAP calls for a monitor or supervisor to be on the vehicle in, in the individual education plan. When a bus is used, which again might be the case, particularly if we need a wheelchair lift, that will have the passengers be at least two rows to the rear of the driver. And when alternative service providers that use either passenger vehicles or passenger vans, the passengers again will always ride in the rear of the vehicle. And our service providers have installed partitions between the driver's area and the passenger area. Next slide, please. So multiple riders, which right now we're thinking of as kind of limited ridership because we are focusing on a relatively small number of students that may be getting special education services in school buildings. So this, and we're planning around multiple riders who may be from multiple households. These cases, transportation would likely be on a type A, a smaller yellow school bus. This, rather than having stops as we do with normal services where there are community stops where multiple students come and wait for a bus at a single place, this will all be kind of door to door, you know, truly curb to curb service that will be individual to each student to avoid circumstances where students congregate at a bus stop. A bus monitor will be along for each ride and to help ensure that our protocols are followed. And seating assignments, you know, we're not necessarily talking about assigned seating per se, the way you think of it in classrooms, but that we will occupy the bus, one student per seat in alternating rows. And we'll load the bus from the back to the front. So the first students load on, who enter the bus will go to the rear and work their way forward, alternating seats. And then when we unload the vehicle at the school, we'll start from the front and work towards the back of the bus. What we're trying to do obviously is minimize the amount, the number of times where students pass each other in their seats just to, again, to avoid any unnecessary contacts. Next slide, please. And then as for loading and unloading, again, we'd expect the school, the vehicle to wait at the bus until there's staff available to escort the students in a physically distant, distant fashion to the building. Where again, we said we have an expectation of school staff. We're using that term loosely. The school staff could be staff assigned to the school, or it could be the bus monitor, depending on the circumstances for each vehicle and building. Pass the riders to stay in their seats again, because we're trying to control that they come off the vehicle in order. And then they'll be escorted to the, maintaining a proper distance to the school entrance. And the same will be true when we're loading the bus, when we're doing transportation away from the school, that the bus monitor will help and school staff, we'd expect to help maintain that students maintain physical distance when they're leaving the building, heading to the load zone and help load the bus again. Loading the rear of the bus first and then working towards the front. Next slide, please.
Chief Podesta, if I could just pause for a moment and acknowledge that Directors DeWolfe and Hersi have joined us. Thank you and please continue.
Great. And so that's, I think we'll pause here for any questions people have about how we're gonna transport students and load and unload transportation vehicles.
Well, thank you, Director Hampson, and thank you, Chief Podesta. I'll start with questions and comments from directors, starting in alphabetical order. So Director Hampson, I'll, we'll start with you on this topic.
I guess the only, it was very thorough, even just reading it ahead of time. So I guess we, we are just starting to do, to transport, correct?
Yes. And these have been, you know, in the parlance of this slide deck, you know, this has been sole transportation because we've transported some students for evaluations. And so those have been typically one student at a time.
And how do we have kind of a ramp up schedule or, you know, in terms of the numbers of students that we're transporting? Starting, you know, obviously with just a few and then by, by what point do we plan to be transporting which other numbers? Do we believe?
That, that really will be a product of these evaluations and the types of services that are deemed to be on site. So we don't have that all mapped out yet. I think in most of these cases, because there's an evaluation going on, this has been pretty high touch with families and each, you know, transportation opportunity is being, you know, kind of custom arranged.
Okay, so, so we don't have any projections as it were as to how, you know, how much, how many students? Our best guess at this point, like just go to the end of November, maybe how many students do you think we would be transporting every day?
I would really defer to my colleague, Dr. Pedrosa.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Okay, that's okay. I understand.
We're geared up that we, we can handle hundreds if need be.
Right, right.
But we'll see what's necessary.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Hampson. Director Hersi?
Seeing as I just joined, I don't have any immediate questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mack.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just for a little bit of clarity, the vehicles that we're talking about are not going to be our yellow bus, buses in general because of the reduced ridership or can you clarify that a little bit more? I mean, I know you don't have clear numbers, but are we?
It's, it's hard to say, you know, it, so last year, most of the yellow school buses that we put on the road were in support of special education. So we may be using, you know, depending on kind of the distribution of students and when they're scheduled for services. If it's efficient, you know, a smaller type A bus can only carry five students with physical distancing. So it, it just depends what the most efficient thing is, what serves families best. It'll be a mix. I, I had to guess it might be roughly half and half like it is when we're, school buildings are open.
Okay, and then just for clarity, right now the slide that's in front of me is the daily health screening plan, but we haven't started going over that yet, or?
That's, that's on the agenda.
Okay, that's next on the agenda. Okay, so I'll hold my questions to that point. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Mack. Director Rankin?
Thanks. Kind of going along with what Director Mack was asking with the kind of individual transportation vehicles versus the buses, as we add more services theoretically or get, you know, as we kind of add more special education students who are being served in person as either, you know, new needs arise or just as we're rolling this all up. Is there, will Howard providing the transportation be kind of a flexible moving thing? In terms of like, maybe it'll change to being a yellow bus where there was one kid and now there are more? How, how, I guess how flexible are we going to be able to be? And then also, what does that mean for our bus drivers?
We're, those topics are actually a bit related. You know, we can be flexible if, depending on how services are scheduled, if it makes sense to have multiple students transported, you know, is, is more efficient. We, we have capacity with all our service providers, we think, to handle this service. And the challenge now is that last school year, we were typically 400 bus drivers employed to handle services now. And since we've cut back so much in our terms of our need, we'll continuing to work with our service provider about how their, you know, how deep their bench will be. And, you know, bringing drivers back, they're very eager to have the work, but that, that will be the, the alternative service providers that provide passenger vehicle service are typically, you know, less used to full-time employment where our bus drivers have historically been. So this is obviously a big challenge for them in terms of maintaining labor force. But we know they're eager to do the work and we certainly have the, you know, the quantity of vehicles needed to transport all of our trend, special education students, like, you know, we've done in normal years. But yes, this will be flexible and since it's based on an IAP, you know, these services are typically, you know, tailored to the needs of the family and students. And if scheduling permits, we would have multiple students on a vehicle.
Okay. So a follow-up on that, I guess, is, you know, we had bus driver shortages in, in pre-COVID times. And when we were talking about transportation choices being made for efficiency, I'm wondering about the finding, you know, is, is the goal to do always the least costly option? Or is there a balance or a metric with, you know, trying to keep bus drivers versus gig workers?
And, and I'm sorry to jump in.
That's okay. I think you know what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think there is a balance. The goal is certainly the safety and the quality of service are the primary importance. The, you know, we have a great relationship with our yellow school bus provider. So we are not, you know, trying to figure out every way to cut corners to avoid using a bus, you know, a bus compared to an alternative service provider for perhaps, you know, a two-hour or 45-minute appointment at a school for a single student is, is expensive. You know, at the rate we're using this, about a $600 cost. And so we're, we're trying to strike that balance. We are using our buses to help with meals and other things, but we, we are trying to be reasonably efficient and make sure that we maintain that flexibility and above all, you know, what is the, in the best interest of the student being served.
That sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. I, I was wondering, so thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering, what did we look at, any other school districts have opened just across the country? Do we, what school comparable districts do we look at in designing, you know, this plan and the protocols?
We, you know, I think have mostly compared to our, just based on the relationships we have. Our, and I want to thank Hunter Maltese who joined the district in August in a while time to help develop this plan, came from the Renton School District. So we've talked to mostly our peers in, in Western Washington and our service providers as well who serve multiple districts. I don't know that we've modeled it, aside from the cleaning protocols. I'm not sure we've modeled the exact service because this is tailored to our specific needs around special education right now. And Hunter, to leave his own, if there's, if you have any benchmark districts that you would like to call out, please do so.
Actually, thank you, Mr. Podesta. My name's Armaltes. We actually are, this is kind of tailor-made because there are very few districts, especially in Washington, that are as unique as Seattle Public Schools with the relationships we have with First Student and our alternative service providers. We are reaching out right now to some of the other districts that are beginning to do sort of the limited reentry to see what they're doing as far as attestations and safety protocols. And I hope that we can update with some more information here in the next couple of days.
Thank, thank you for that information. Now that's, that's good to hear. I'm wondering just, obviously as we want to look at, evaluate, you know, what, what are the, you know, what, what kind of problems we're gonna be facing with this plan or what the biggest hurdles will be for it. Looking at the attestation will be completed before the student receives transportation services. Is that done on paper right there, on, on site before the student boards? Is it done online prior to that? What is the process the parents will be doing with their children for that?
Currently, we're planning for a paper process and that we can, another reason where we may have the bus monitor help as needed. Again, these are, are arranged trips, given that they're based after an evaluation for an IAP. We will continue to work hand in hand with our partners in health services. And when other processes for students move from paper to an electronic process, we'll, we'll follow suit.
Thanks, and, and final question, and maybe this is early because clearly this is being modeled for the special ed, the limited students will be transporting right now. Does this plan scale up for when we are doing all grades coming in and needing transportation or, you know, the ones who do need? Or will this need to be redone when that time comes?
I, I think by and large it mostly scales up. The biggest question we'll have, if we were doing this for a larger volume of general education students is the question about having a monitor on every bus. And that's, no pun intended, that's something we'll monitor, you know, to see how that's working. You know, if these are younger grade students, you know, maintaining the physical distancing on the bus, making sure students are wearing PPE, you know, may not be appropriate for a driver to try to manage the vehicle on their own. So for, for buses, that, that's something we'll need to keep an eye on. And that's one of the questions we're working with other districts. How would they man, how would they expect to manage and staff buses and, and manage students on the bus? So that's probably the main question as this.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you at this time, Chief Podesta, but thank you. Director Hersi, did you want to jump in with any or should we, are we okay to move on?
We're good to move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, our second topic, we're, we're doing well on time. We have an hour left on, in our reopening update work session today. The second topic is the daily health screening plan. I will hand it over to Chief of Schools and Continuous Improvement, Wyatt Jesse, now to begin that presentation.
Thank you, Board President DeWolfe. I would like to first recognize the partnership around this work. We've been working with facilities, safety and security, transportation. And we also dot, so a lot of the technical pieces of this. Then within our own team, Executive Director of Coordinated Behavioral Health Services, Pat Sander, and our manager within Health Services, Carrie Nicholson, who are here also to help answer any questions you may have. So for us, daily health screening plans are one of our primary measures. So for us, daily health screening plans are one of our primary measures to reduce the transmission rate of COVID-19. And so we want to make sure that we're able to identify any individuals with symptoms that are related to COVID, possible exposure, or in fact, a confirmed case of COVID-19. It's really imperative because it allows us to just really cut down or minimize the exposure of this particular virus to the greater community in addition to our other measures such as masks, social distancing and sanitation. So for us, we want to make sure that prior to entering any of our facilities, that employees, students and family members or any other community members are being screened through the COVID-19 procedures in accordance with local and state health guidelines. We know that our employees right now are the bulk of the folks that are coming onto our campuses. And we really, we are requiring them to self-screen again prior to coming into any of the facilities. Those questions that we ask are straight from the Centers for Disease and Control and Prevention as part of those five questions we want to be asking them. Something that we did cover a couple months ago in a previous board work session. If a employee does attest to any of the questions, say yes, we will, they are denied entry and there is follow-up, which I will cover a little bit later in this presentation. Next slide, please. So the attestation process staff have access to through two primary means electronically. They are right on our website and they can open it up. It gives easy access to the questions and then affirmation. Or they can also use the QRD code as posted on the right on the visual and you can use your smartphone, take a photo and answer the questions in that way as well. These signs that you see on the right for the QRD, in addition to other health and safety protocol signs that we take from the Department of Health in Seattle-Kin County Public Health, or all of our, all 104 schools as well as the John Stanford Center. We've gone around to each of the sites to attest that they're up and running and all the other pieces of equipment and signage are there as well. In the event that someone is not able to do it electronically prior to coming onsite, we do have paper and pen attestation forms, a common form that is available there for any employee or other visitors to attest onsite. The forms, electronic forms when processed, bring into a database and help support our ability to track if anybody again has answered yes to the questions. Next slide, please. So it's really about one of the key individuals and in accordance, again, with state regulations, we know that we have to have a COVID site supervisor. The really critical pieces about this is that person does have a relationship with their community. Relations are essential to know what's going on and to be able to reach pertinent individuals and make connections and giving information and knowledge and answering questions. In addition to also knowing and knowledge of the facilities, each of our schools has some uniqueness. And knowing the facilities and what's going on is also really critical. This individual would also monitor the health of employees. Again, through the attestation process or anything else, we know it's critical to helping individuals if they have questions or fears or anxieties. Enforcing the district's site safety plan. One of the key things that we've been working on is around staff schedules. So in our training with all the COVID site supervisors as well as the school leaders, we know that staff schedules are really critical. When are folks coming onsite so that you can get a sense of the cadence of the work and when to expect folks? And also manage common locations. As they monitor also the reconciliation every morning of the COVID attestation reports electronically as well as the paper forms, really reviewing that information. And then making connection for again, any questions, concerns or things that come up around overall health and guidance in addition to the attestation with our own central COVID Center Command Team. That team is something I'll, I'll cover on the next slide. But we also have a specific email that we've been using since early on, all the way back to last March. That email is something we've been using for questions that come or specifically, as it says here, health alerts so that we have a signal there's something we have to attend to right away. Next slide, please. So we have a COVID Central Command Center. It is comprised of Seattle Public Schools nurses who have been specially trained. And this team, really, since we're talking a lot about attestation, do have oversight and monitoring of all of the electronic attestation reports across the district. So they have access to all of the information in relations to attestation so that we know if there is a trigger, we can get right on it as quickly as possible. Again, the quicker we can act, the more we can minimize the transmission of COVID-19. We also, this, this team answers any questions that may come up or any concerns. They do the contract tracing. Again, they're specially trained individuals. And of course, we're in partnership with our liaison at Seattle-Kin County Public Health and also health providers. This team works with facilities around cleaning and any organization disinfectant on any specific cases. And then also working with communications team around any of our ability to notify of suspected or confirmed cases. Lots of different variation. We've had experience in this area over, you know, over a couple dozen situations that we've worked on across the district and again, in partnership with Seattle-Kin County Public Health. Next slide, please. Student attestation, so as Chief Podesta was mentioning, right now, very limited access to our sites. We did start off with in-person special education evaluations. We wanted to make sure that we're upholding our health and safety protocols. Health screening questions prior to coming through onto the facility. Again, very low numbers, but also just our, have preparedness for students with IEPs coming onsite as we expand that. Again, Chief Podesta was highlighting that in the growth. And so we do have utilization of pen and paper as well as preparedness for electronic attestation forms in the event that, you know, again, services or the number of students expand. Those attestation forms are currently translated in 15 languages and again, are in relations to the questions from the CDC. So for me, that will conclude it. I'll hand it back to you, Board President DeWolfe.
Thank you, Chief Jesse. Okay, we'll start alphabetically backwards, so we'll start with Director Vera Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Chief Jesse, for all the information. I think I have the same question as I had for Chief Podesta regarding, what are the districts comparable that we looked at to gauge, you know, the success or difficulties of this plan and protocols?
Well, we have connections at the state level as well as locally. We see some of their information posted. I'll put it over to Carrie Nicholson. She can tell you directly since she's working with many different folks, including the U-Dub.
Hi, thank you. Can you repeat the question for me? I cut out for just a second, so I need to hear the, the beginning part of it.
Oh, yeah, it was just what, what if any districts, similar districts do we look at to compare plans or to, you know, to learn from as we, as we plan out our own protocols?
Thank you for repeating that. Yeah, and so great question because we're all learning as we go, right? So I actually was on a call today. I attend our Puget Sound Nurse Leader Meetings to learn across the districts how they're starting to implement as well as with public health. And we're all in this process slowly and learning together. And it's varied. It's, I can just tell you, it's varied across the districts. One thing that, that we are doing right now is with the student attestation that we are actually collecting that data. So whether the parent is doing it onsite or doing it with the psych when they are in in-person evaluation right now, that is data that we're able to see. I'm hearing it differently where other districts are, are not actually collecting that data. So it's going to be important for us to learn as we go forward with our eyes on other districts as well as being engaged in meetings with stakeholders from across the state.
Thank you, thank you. My second question is for Chief Jesse. Is there a, a point at which we have like, for how do we shut down a school versus shut down, you know, the district versus, you know, just based on COVID cases or any other data that comes in? Is there already kind of a plan for that?
Yeah, and that's, that's a great question. You know, we work across departmentally, Chief Podesta's team, especially in this area. You know, one of the, we have some thresholds. We have some thresholds on just being able to, and I think I mentioned this before, is some of our thresholds just to be able to clean up sites. That is actually really our number one pinpoint because you have to close down a site. You know, you want to have 24 hours, the fogging, you know? And so when you start backing up that and you have to do the deep cleaning, that would be something that would, that would definitely slow us down. And then I'll just also say that, you know, some of this is again, as Carrie Nicholson was mentioning, where we're learning together slowly. And, and one of our key partners that we talk to all the time on this is again, Seattle-Kin County Public Health. They sound like a promotional, marketing person, but it's really, they too want to work with us to really know where the transmission rates, what, how, how intensive is it for the community, not here in Seattle, but just the surrounding area as well? So those are things that we get, but right here, right now, it would definitely be for us cleaning as it stands. Because we can only handle like four or five sites at a time being shut down.
Gotcha. Thank you. No, no further questions.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed if, did we get to the end of the slides?
For this portion of the presentation, the cleaning is following me, Director Rankin.
Say that again?
I said, so I'm, I'm in the middle of this overall presentation, Director Rankin.
Oh, yeah. I looked at them ahead of time and I wrote down some questions and so then I was confused about. I think that my questions are actually upcoming. And, and just for just now, I'll say seems really thoughtful and in, in alignment with what I have seen happening elsewhere and coming from Kin County Health and everything. So I don't have any questions.
Thanks, Director Rankin. Director Mack?
Yeah, hi. For clarity, did I understand that we are tracking the student attestations but not the staff? Or are we also tracking the staff attestations? In the system?
We track both and on the electronic currently because we've been doing staff. We have electronic staff ones. We're currently using paper and pencil due to the really low numbers for student.
Okay. I'm curious to know about the question that's been raised kind of in the community around actually taking temperatures at the door directly and not relying on the attestation of the person to say that they've taken their temperature or not taken their temperature. I'm wondering around what the guidance is from public health as to the the risk that that may pose, not actually doing physical temperature taking, but just relying on attestation. Is there any, have they discussed that point? Or are they in, in agreement that just relying on someone's word that they don't have a fever is, is, is going to be reliable enough?
Yeah, I, I'm going to, I'm going to toss it back to Carrie Nicholson. She is a health professional. And I would just throw in there also, Director Mack, is some of the just ability to also do testing. That is, that is a very powerful tool. In addition to obviously the other measures that we have around prevention, again, masks, sanitation, social distancing and attestation. So I'll let her answer your question directly though.
Thank you, Director Mack. That's a great question. So this is a question that's been raised all along when we found out that attestation would be required to be one of the requirements. And really what it comes down to is capacity. So capacity to do that across the district and in large districts or even in small. The temperature is just one indicator of a multitude of symptoms. So the guidance right now and with public health or Seattle-Kin County Public Health is that the district, we can make that decision whether that is an attestation from the parent, guardian and staff versus doing it at the door. And I will say that when we think about coming in further down the road, that, that that might change if there needs to be a stopgap to make sure attestation is, takes place. But it will not be part of our regular screening process. We do have nurses right now in this model that are calling the families in advance to go over what that means to take a temperature. And they go over all the attestation questions and the expectations. So I think education is going to be a big piece of it so that family understand what the symptoms mean and what our process means to ensure, to reduce the transmission of the virus in the school system itself.
Okay, thank you for that. My other question I think is about just getting complete clarity on what happens and how it's tracked in this, how exactly is it tracked in the system to do the contract tracing if, say, someone in their attestation says they have in fact been in contact with someone else or have certain symptoms or have tested positive or whatever. How, how does that get flagged and how does that get responded to?
Yeah, that's the, the flag comes from attestation. But we also get information as I, in the, earlier in the presentation about just a health alert or they're just directly called the command center. That's the way we get information. Sometimes it comes directly from the school leader is, who has the overall COVID site supervisor. So that comes to us and then we work with the school leader just to get the names of folks that are related to the situation. Obviously, situations can vary from a suspected case to a confirmed case. And we even get questions around folks that haven't even come onsite or been in a Seattle Public Schools facility. So we take those questions. And then we work with Seattle Public, Seattle-Kin County Public Health. They help, help facilitate some of it. And then we send, like I mentioned before, we'll work on some of the case tracking with them about who is immediately is, as far as families, Seattle Public Schools families, students, obviously, and staff. That's where we go. And then we also send out, again, depending on the situation, again, on a suspected case or based on the timelines. But we have form letters that we already have been using that we'll send out to the greater community or those who are directly involved. So that's our protocol for that, those pieces, again, on any suspect or to confirm cases.
Okay, great. So that, but just, just the, I think the piece of clarity was, I think I, I think I heard you say it, but I just want to make sure I understand it properly and that it's transparent. There's a daily expectation that the COVID supervisor looks over the attestations and reviews those and flags anything and follows up on it. So there's, there is somebody responsible in every building to be checking on that, reviewing the attestations daily and then following up. Is that correct?
That is correct. In addition, we have the central COVID site command center, as I was mentioning, that also can see the same data, Director Mack, and they are right on it. And so we look at those things, including myself, so that we can respond and kind of really track and see if there's patterns, you know? And so some of this, as, as we know, and again, we're working with our And so some of this, as, as we know, and again, we're working with our local health, public health agencies, just around any patterns or things that we see. In event that, you know, as that we were talking about on the team of, you know, right now we're low, but in the event that things escalate, especially going into the winter, you know, we have preparedness to expand and be ready to, to react to multiple situations. So we've, we've been working on that as well.
I appreciate that a lot. I'm sorry to take up more time, but I, I do, I think the article that came out today says that Seattle is like the lowest, or we're, we're very low for numbers and that we're doing a really good job in as a community. So I just, I think that's great. And that I appreciate that we in our system, you have a very clear statement as who's responsible and that it is actively being tracked. It's not like somebody fills it out and it goes nowhere. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hershey.
Yeah, thanks. So first off, thank you for all the work that's gone into this. I, I just think as, you know, an educator and as a person of color myself, I, I've got some serious concerns around the guidance that King County Health is putting out in terms of like what are the protocols that need to be followed? You know, attestation, I, I totally get and understand. But I, I'm just very concerned about like the fact that this might not be robust enough. So I just wanted to give district staff an opportunity to, to provide some families, especially those of color, especially black families out there who are, are much more impacted by COVID-19 than than our white counterparts. What, what reassurances can, can you offer families at this intersection that we are going to do everything that we can to, to mitigate and reduce risk? Because listening through this, this all sounds fine and good, but I, I'm not really feeling the air of confidence that I, that I would need to feel knowing that we're heading into cold and flu season additionally. So I'm just really looking for, from your perspective, what, what reassurances can you provide for our families out there who might be listening and thinking that this might not go far enough?
I, I appreciate that. And we know that, you know, here in Seattle Public Schools, health and safety for our students, our families and our staff is paramount. It's the number one responsibility that we have. We take it very seriously. We are part of the overall health and safety plan for the greater community, obviously, as a, as a common community sites. And so we've been, again, as I've mentioned many times, working in partnership with public health and also our health agencies to make sure that we are doing everything we can and taking all the right precautions and steps to ensure not only that we're preventative, but how can we respond as quickly as possible to mitigate or minimize any additional transmission? And then making sure that we're transparent. Some of the fear and the anxieties come from some of the lack of information. And I, and I know Carrie Nicholson was mentioning, you know, just the trainings and getting information out. I think she could, she could, her or Pat could also highlight for you and others just about how seriously that we're taking it and how, how, how prepared we really are in comparison to other, other folks. Better, Carrie?
Yeah, thank you, Director Hershey. I, I appreciate the concern and we share that concern as well as understanding our community and the need and how we meet those needs. And, and I, and my wonder is around additional education, additional understanding about, for us on our end is my, what I mean, about what, how we can facilitate that understanding. So I'm interested myself in, and I will reach out to public health as well because I think it's a conversation for us all to have so that our communication and our plan is transparent and it's understandable and that it's received by, by all in the community. And so I, I will continue this conversation because I think there's more for us ourselves to learn. I don't want to assume that the plan, I, I feel confident in the plan, but it's not my plan. And the community needs to feel confident in the plan. So I thank you for raising that question.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Director Hershey. Director Hampson.
Thank you. Yes, so I apologize if I missed it about the site supervisor. You mentioned training, I don't know if you can go to that slide, but how is the site supervisor selected? And what is that relationship like with the principal? And how do they interface with other parts of the district? With community-based organizations that may be providing childcare? How does, how does all that work? And this kind of goes to the question that Director Hershey asked as well because I, I, I think one of the things that I believe we hoped as a board was that for those that did have to or wanted to be able to operate out of their classrooms, that, and, and then those that, that needed to be on site, that we were, we're requiring an extremely predictable, consistent environment. And it's, I, I'm not quite at the level of confidence that I, that I would want to be at. And I think some of it is tied up in that, you know, who's the authority? And how are we making sure that this is truly systematized at every level of detail?
So let me start off with the fact that we are working absolutely in detail at every single site. And so again, some of that is you need somebody on any plan like this, you need to have somebody at the site who specifically knows and has ultimate responsibility. That is the principle. The lead person is the COVID site supervisor for any of the school is the principal. They're the one ultimately responsible, obviously related to their, their role, their authority, right, and some of their own direct responsibilities to ensuring the safety, again, for staff, students and families. And so they go through, we have a COVID site supervisor toolkit. It is in the training, we have videos, we provide that, gone over with them and their staff. They understand those roles. There are also, other folks can share in those responsibilities. Obviously, working as a team, we have schools that vary in size here. So you definitely want to have other folks that come on. And so they work as a team. Other folks are identified, up to five individuals for an individual's school. They get the retraining, they get the information, in addition to the attestation report so that they can keep up on exactly anybody who's attesting says yes to any of the questions. And then also just around tracking and monitoring, again, as I said, on site, the signage, the entry, the walking throughs. And we have multiple teams doing walkthroughs at each of the sites. Myself, Pat, Carrie, folks that are on this line, have gone out to every single school, done walkthroughs and have attested to make sure that we have the COVID attestation stand up in the front main entry of every single school and that there's the signage and that things are being followed in addition to PPE and signage all around. And so we continue to do that. We have, again, the central office, command center. So we've gone through all those pieces, we've gone the training and we're going to keep coming back. And I think Carrie was mentioned that well off of Director Hershey's question is, you know, we're still in a learning stance and we continue to adapt. And I think you hear that from us and in addition to Chief Podesta. As we learn, we need to adapt. And that's what's going to make us the best organization and safest and for, again, our community.
So this, sorry, you answered the site supervisor is the principal?
That is the primary supervisor. There can also be up to four other folks from a school that serve in the capacity of a site supervisor as they share responsibilities. Again, we have some very large, obviously, schools and those kind of comprehensive schools would need multiple folks and so that's what they're doing.
Okay. Go ahead, Director Wolf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director, Chief Jesse, I don't have any questions. I appreciate the presentation. I just wanted to at least highlight something that I, that I think might be helpful, particularly given Director Hershey's question, is I would strongly suggest some sort of a community session where your department can hear from community about these issues specifically, just as a way to really ensure that the exact voices that Director Hershey is saying that this needs to speak to as well are heard, just as a, just as a suggestion to really make sure that, that the folks in our community, particularly the most vulnerable, have a say and an ability to impact how this looks.
Thank you very much for the feedback.
Okay. So we are doing okay on time, everybody. Thank you for your, your participation today. And we'll now move on to our final topic from today's reopening.
Oh, sorry.
We'll now move on to the third and final topic of this reopening work session, which is handing it over to Chief Podesta to talk about our cleaning regimen. So Chief Podesta, over to you.
Thank you, Director Wolf. And this will be fairly succinct. We've been, we've talked about cleaning several times and at a higher level have discussed all these subjects and really started work along this front last spring and have been, you know, operating varieties of levels of activities in school buildings, which is really what it comes down to. You know, making sure that we have a way of cleaning any space that's occupied in a building, depending on the level of use. And we are operating, you know, now in our current mode with, with a certain amount of activity. We have some teachers working in schools, we have these evaluations going on, we're distributing meals, we have technology resource centers, we have childcare, we have a variety of activity in our buildings and using common spaces and classrooms and anywhere that is occupied each day is, is cleaned daily. And then restrooms are cleaned three times per day. And then in a variety of spaces, we have buildings, things that are called high touch points, which is a term you've heard me use since last spring. And we'll detail later in this presentation, are cleaned multiple times a day. Classrooms and offices that they are occupied, you know, are, again, we're removing waste, we're disinfecting, you know, surfaces that are likely to be touched and then focusing particularly on hand washing sinks as, as one of those and then, you know, cleaning and sweeping as needed. Next slide, please. And then as more students come into buildings over time, again, this will be a, a daily schedule. You know, what's different is that more classrooms may be occupied and that we'll clean those classrooms day, daily, which is different from our practices, you know, in, in before we were dealing with this pandemic. And again, continue to clean restrooms in each zone in the school multiple times per day, three times per day, and then touch, high touch points, thing, surfaces that people come into contact with. The plan has always been if we're providing meal service for students receiving onsite services, that that would be in the classroom. So we're working to have custodial support, nutrition services in cleanup related to food. And then the last bullet here talks about A and B cohorts, which is a term we'd used in discussion of the hybrid model. But it, it really applies in any model. If the same space, typically a classroom would be cleaned once a day, but if the same classroom is going to be occupied multiple times a day, if, if, you know, or if we're a resource room and we had different services being provided to different students over the course of the day, we would clean the room between different cohorts of students, even if that's just two students at two different times during the course of a day. Next slide, please. And this is probably where we refined our practices the most since last spring, is how would we react to a confirmed case of COVID in a building? And what's really, there are kind of two aspects to this. You know, not having dealt with this before, our response last, at the spring, really mimicked how we would respond to a neurovirus or another infection where we really always, our practice was close the whole building. And Chief Jesse referred to, you know, that ended up being kind of a constraint in the bottleneck is well, how many buildings can you close and be ready for business the next day? We, I think, have refined our practices since. We, the advice from public health agencies is don't clean the space for, you know, don't have staff cleaning a space for 24 hours after there's a confirmed case. We would use the same procedure that we are going to use an electrostatic sprayer. I, I think it's worth mentioning that the brand name is Clorox. That's the manufacturer of the sprayer. It does not mean that we are spraying bleach or a chloro. We're, the, this device fogs the space in the room and disinfects every surface in the space by, you know, misting system that sprays into a confined space. And then we would, after that's done, that all surfaces would be wiped down. And what's different now from the spring is we, you know, are managing, we, we've done all the walkthroughs that Chief Jesse referred to. We understand how we're using the spaces in kind of zones in buildings. And, you know, through contact tracing and understanding the activities of buildings, we would focus on disinfecting a particular space in a building, not because of one case in a comprehensive high school, close the whole high school, which is the kind of thing we were doing last spring. And, and the fact we just have, how many staff and how many pieces of equipment do we have? We've also ordered many more of these electrostatic sprayers. So we can concurrently clean multiple spaces now, which was a limitation last spring. And, and again, af- after that process was done, all surfaces would be wiped down. Then the ventilation system would be disabled in a space to allow the disinfection to, to work. And then would be set to purge all the air from the space for four hours and then return back to the mode that we're operating buildings in now to maximize the ventilation to get to exchanging air at the rate of 25 cubic feet per minute per occupant of a space. Next slide, please. And then again, just because I've used this term many times and then it could mean anything to anybody, I think it's just working. Looking at the list of when we say common touch points, what are we talking about? And these have, you know, been thought through and documented and check, worksheets have been developed for custodial staff to, you know, work through in a checklist faction, all these types of surfaces in, you know, classroom and office space. Next slide, please. Restrooms as well. And then in common areas, which is the last slide, if you could go forward one more. And I won't read through these lists, but that, you know, the custodial supervisors and management have worked through at this level of detail is, you know, what, as you clean an area, you know, check off that we've addressed cleaning surfaces in all these spaces. So again, this is, we're pretty much have refined practices we've been doing since we found ourselves in this environment. And, you know, we're cleaning more spaces, using some new tools and then getting to a daily cleaning schedule for a classroom in any place occupied. So I will entertain any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you, Chief Podesta. Okay, Director Hampson.
Um, I think my primary, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I think my primary question is the the, the bathrooms, you're not talking about these as common versus non-common spaces. And I'd asked a long time ago about getting, about providing cleaning in the spaces. I know this is partly under you and partly under budget, but about whether or not we're providing cleaning in childcare spaces.
We have worked up some of those estimates from the custodial side and we've just only begun discussions a little bit with central office staff about, you know, are there, and it really comes down to for the classroom space, the childcare spaces that is and it really comes down to for the classroom space, the childcare spaces that is their dedicated space. It's on average, you know, with, um, we have a cost estimate of about $525 a month to clean that space. We, the common spaces that many of our childcare, our, um, providers are using, the, um, gymnasiums and lunchrooms, we're already cleaning. Um, and we're cleaning classrooms to the extent, um, you know, and this varies on a case by case basis. If, if the providers are using a classroom, um, that wasn't part of the dedicated space, we're, we're cleaning that as well. And then we're providing some sport, supports to all the operators. Now we're offering these supports. We're taking out their trash. We're providing, um, uh, wipes and some, um, uh, products for their use. And then, um, different providers have different models and we just haven't had those conversations yet, nor have we talked through with finance about how to fund this. But, um, some use their own staff and, you know, getting help from us might be disrupted to their own workforce, some contract out. So I think our understanding is different providers. This would be of, um, uh, you know, variable value to the different operators. And that, that discussion hasn't really happened yet, but we are working on thinking this through.
Okay, um, cause I think, I do think that goes back to a bit the prior conversation around ensuring safety in our buildings as a whole. I realize that there are dedicated spaces and shared spaces, but, you know, by and large, when we picture, picture schools, we picture them as pretty fluid environments. I realize that's not so much the case now, but people are still, you know, coming and going. And, um, so I really appreciate any support that we can give. And then it sounds like, so we're not in running afoul of our labor agreement by, if a childcare provider, provider already has a contracted relationship with the custodial service?
No, be, cause that's for their lea- you know, their, their space that's kind of leased under our agreement. So that kind of space is their jurisdiction. And they're not cleaning, if they're using shared space, if they're using a lunchroom or they're using a classroom, that is a space that is our jurisdiction, for lack of a better word, we're cleaning that. So it, it, it really only, um, what they've historically cleaned is their own dedicated spaces. And we've done some work to estimate, well, if we did that, what, what would be the workload? And then I think we do need to have discussion about cost and then is that actually helpful to all of them? And I think my understanding is it might be for some and maybe less so for others.
Okay, um, well, thank you for that. And if you could keep us posted, I'm hoping.
I, I, to be honest, I also wanted to kind of get through this level as these evaluations. And we understood, you know, what level of service we needed to provide as, as students come onsite to make sure that we, we have capacity before we pick up one more thing, but we're, we're prepared to, to do this. We just need to think it through a little bit.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Um, I don't have any additional questions at this time. You may move on to the next director. Thank you, Director Mac.
Yeah, hi, I do, I have a couple of questions. One is about, uh, my interest was kind of piqued about how we're, um, setting up bathrooms or if we are setting up bathrooms in a different way such that it will support the six foot distance or, you know, some level of distancing so that you don't have, you know, six people in a two stall bathroom all at the same time. Do we have, what are the protocols around that?
We had done some planning around this when we were looking at the hybrid model about really how, you know, since the bathroom environment itself is a, um, somewhat fix, you know, that the fixtures are fixed. There is, eh, we, we weren't going to reconfigure the physical space, but manage access to the bathrooms that different cohorts of students would use different restrooms. And then access to how many students would be, um, allowed in at one time, but really trying to work at, you know, one student at a time as is possible. Again, given the volume of students we have now, um, and the high kind of level of supervision, we're, we're relying on that and we'll have to keep adjusting if that volume of students gets higher. But, um, you know, the main strategy is different functions are do, using different bathrooms.
Okay, so there is some protocol in place in terms to mitigate it, not by saying closing off, you know, every other stall or something, but the expectation that there's, uh, responsibility for kind of metering, uh, the number of students or kids. So I, so I guess going back to questions that Director Hampson was kind of raising, I'm curious about, do we, last time we spoke about this, the clarity of how much space, different, um, functions in the buildings was going to be using was still kind of unclear because things were still being negotiated and discussed. Do we have more clarity at this point, uh, with, you know, for example, this elementary school has a childcare that goes beyond their, um, existing or the previous lease agreement to include three classrooms and, and that sort of information? Do we have, uh, do we have a spreadsheet that kind of clarifies the capacity usage for each of the functions?
We had, uh, we, we do have such a spreadsheet where we're keeping track of these arrangements. You know, it is a somewhat fluid situation and, um, that is being revised now as we were identifying rooms for the special education evaluations that are going on. So we tinkered that with a little bit and I'll need to check, you know, so that do we need to, to re-inventory now? We also have moved, um, some of the meal distribution sites, reconfigured those a bit as we have a, a bit more traffic in the building. So it, it is being maintained. Things get kind of tweaked, uh, on a, on an as-needed basis. It's, uh, while there, there's, uh, there is activity in buildings. I think we have enough staff keeping an eye at each site that it, it's pretty manageable.
Thank you for that. I, I would like to request that we get that kind of comprehensive information sometime soon in whatever appropriate medium would be helpful, just to, so that we, you know, kind of have that information from a capacity analysis side. I don't know where in our future, um, meetings it makes sense or that would be coming through ops or something, but, um, it would be useful to have the clarity on that. My, my last and final question is about, um, the impact to our budget, uh, for the cleaning services. Because our previous cleaning regiment was substantially reduced and this is like three, four times the frequency. So do we have an estimate of the impact to our budget for, uh, the cleaning services? Even in this remote environment, which is, I think we're cleaning substantially more often than we did previous.
We do, we built an estimate, you know, based on the assumptions of how many classrooms were occupied. Again, since, since that number is, is fairly low, um, and, you know, there isn't, uh, lunchroom activity. Right now, I, I think even though occupied classrooms are the main things and bathrooms are being cleaned more often, that's, we're able to recycle capacity for things that weren't being used, you know, like onsite, um, lunchrooms and libraries and, you know, some things are easier, some things are getting more attention. So for now, at the very current level, it's, um, fairly balanced to where we were. If, um, we had significant more, significantly more activity in classrooms, we can provide an estimate kind of on a per-classroom basis. And the number escapes me at the moment, but we, we did do a, a net of, um, when we were looking at, you know, using our buildings nearly every day and using every classroom every day for the hybrid model of, you know, that, that were certainly a deficit from our, our current operations. And the exact number escapes me, but we can, we can revisit it. And again, it, it really comes down to how many classrooms are we cleaning daily or multiple times a day will be the, the biggest, X-factor here.
Yeah, I, I just appreciate to have that, uh, information on the, the increase in the budget. If it's whatever it is, uh, either Friday memo or the next budget conversation, just to have clarity on that. Thank you.
Yeah, we, and it kind of the bottom line, that had assumed a significant increase in custodial staff, which we are, are not. We haven't implemented. We're able to accomplish this with the staff we have in place.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Podesta. Appreciate it.
Director Rankin.
Thank you. Um, uh, kind of continuing off of something that Director Hampson asked. With the childcare spaces, um, if they have, you know, other entities or contractors or, you know, whatever agreement they may have of, uh, people coming in, how does that, like, I understand that they're leasing the space, but when the primary concern is air, and unless we're hermetically sealing that part of the building, the air is not isolated to those spaces. So in terms of like just knowing who's coming in and out of buildings, who would be ultimately responsible for sort of any attestation or, or kind of, um, knowing from our providers who else they may have coming in and out?
As far, if you're talking about attestations, perhaps, um, I could lean on my colleague, Chief Jesse to describe it, if that's.
Or, well, no, not necessarily attestations, but if, if we're sort of saying, okay, the childcare spaces, uh, you know, they're leasing that and they are, uh, responsible for their space. And, but we're trying overall to know who's coming in and out of our buildings. And if they have additional custodial staff, maybe, uh, I guess are we, do, is there a, anything in place so that the principal or someone from SPS kind of just has an understanding of who's in our building?
Typically, so the outside services that clean childcare spaces are, are in dedicated space with a dedicated entrance. So I do not believe, you know, we are managing their third-party contracts. A- and then again, um, some childcare operators clean their own space with their own staff, so it varies. We can certainly, um, drill down into that a little bit. We are working hand in hand with them when their activities spill out into spaces that we manage. But this has typically been, you know, the things they manage are, are their own, you know, kind of discreet, discreet spaces.
Which makes sense when we're not talking about an airborne virus.
Sure, I, I understand.
Okay, I'm just.
And I appreciate the question and I, and I think, um, I will, uh, continue to work, um, with, uh, our, um, colleagues in the, um, uh, that manage these partnerships and facility staff. We do, you know, we're providing meals there. There is, eh, in, the central office may not be able to articulate every piece of this, but on a building level, you know, we're, we, you know, are working with them and we're providing meals as, as needed. And so there is a pretty good working relationship. I, it is, is a little bit arms length, again, that perhaps from the central office view, but at, at the building level, we'll work pretty well together.
I think that's actually good. I don't think that, you know, I should be able to say, Fred, how many people were at Loyal Heights today, you know, and you should be able to tell me a number. But in terms of the people at that site, just for whoever is sort of on the ground there overseeing the whole building, that, that they should know i- if there are new entities coming in and out, I guess.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the feedback and, and we'll take that back to the team.
Great, thanks, great. Um, my other question is about, um, the attes- and this might actually have been in the other section now, I've lost track. But the attestation that employees are given, um, including transportation, there was a slide that said that if an employee answers yes to any attestation questions and then they are denied entry into the work location, which totally makes sense. But my question is, uh, does that person have to take leave? Do they get paid for the day? How does that work? And what I'm really getting at is, do we have something in place to make sure that people are not being put in a position where they have to hedge for themselves how sick they think they might be versus, uh, putting their livelihood at risk? Does that make sense?
Yeah, my experience with this has been there, there's been certainly follow-up and the discussion is not quite, that black and white. And then I'll, um, let, uh, uh, Chief Jesse.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to say that people would be dishonest. My worry is if, if we, if we are, that people will, you know, that are forced into decisions that affect their overall life. This is parents included, you know, like how, how sick is my kid really? Can I send them in today, you know, in normal times? That if, uh, there's a, basically, I don't want there to be a penalty for somebody saying, yes, I actually have one of these symptoms. How, now how are we walking that line, I guess?
You're right, we're in a space where we want to provide flexibility. And, um, as I mentioned earlier, there's also comfort level. When we're talking about individual health, there is a large spectrum of comfort level just in relations to space and areas. And so we need to respect that. We rely largely to personnel. They can take, uh, sick leave. If anything extends, uh, further from that, then they can go ahead and move to our leave desk, uh, and there's a, you know, there's a couple of different packages around, uh, extended leave that may be needed, uh, just in relations to, again, um, any kind of sus- you know, suspected case or, or again, their own, um, at-risk, you know, higher risk, uh, individuals, for, for example.
That doesn't really answer the question. My concern is that, are we incentivizing people to downplay if they may have a symptom? By there being a penalty for them financially in being sick?
They still get paid for, on the leave, you know, so like regular sick leave, they continue to get paid like their regular salary. So there's no incentive, I mean, there's no penalty for them if they were thinking that they might have a cold, for example, and they could not come into work or feeling that pressure. And then we ob- obviously have folks working off-site. They don't have to come in, uh, for most of our folks, uh, depending on essential. And then I, I would leave it to Chief Cod to answer any kind of more detailed question, depending on the position that you are worried about, Director Rankin.
Yeah, that's probably my real question for Chief Cod. I just, you know, I, I would hope that we would as much as possibly be encouraging people to take symptoms very seriously, even if they may seem mild. Is I guess the bottom line.
Yeah, and the attestation.
Excuse me, I just want to be thoughtful on time here because it feels like we're moving from cleaning regimen to kind of HR stuff. So just want to make sure, given that we're about three minutes left on this session, if, if that could potentially just be answered by email, Director Rankin?
I can follow up with, um, Dr. Cod.
Thank you. Uh, Director Verissimo.
Thank you, um, thank you for, um, presentation. My questions, uh, were answered. Uh, I had, I had some budget and hiring questions because we're all covered with Director Mac, so I don't have any other questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Verissimo. Um, and I, I have no other additional questions for you at this time, Chief Jesse. So thank you very much. Uh, and thank you both you and Chief Podesta for, um, present, your presentations today. And I look forward to, um, the follow-up from today's meeting. So Chief Jesse, um, I'm curious if you can just repeat back what you heard as some of the follow-up that we should expect from you? And Chief Podesta, the same to you.
Yeah, for me, uh, it was directly on your request and I think related also Director Hershey's, uh, around just, you know, back to community engagement and more information for my team, you know, with the ongoing, uh, changes. So for health and safety, we want to make sure we're keeping that information out in the forefront. And so that's one of the direct things. And then, um, I don't know if Director Rankin's request is directly related to me, but if there is something, I'll make sure to follow up regarding personnel and, and them feeling, um, secure enough to, to, um, take any kind of leave if ne- necessary.
And, uh, this is Chief Operations Officer Podesta. The, what I had heard were questions really related to, um, potential services we could offer to childcare providers. And then understanding the utilization of spaces in our building by, by those providers and perhaps other functions in the building. or perhaps other functions in the building, you know, at the, at the macro level, understanding what that means to the capacity of our buildings. And then I'm working with facility staff and childcare operators about their cleaning regimens and and how they're staffing that and how that's managing, you know, affecting the management of our buildings overall were the main questions I took away.
Okay. I would, hopefully we'll get those by the Friday memo. And just as a, as a blanket, I guess, update. I had a really great conversation just about our meeting minutes. And so moving forward as president, well, at least while I'm president, every time we have a work session at the end, I'll ask the staff that presented what they heard back to synthesize the follow-up items so that we can track those. So I appreciate you sharing back what you heard today. With that, directors, this concludes our reopening update work sessions, excuse me, work sessions. So we will be moving into a second board special meeting now for the purposes of an executive session. So please join me in that separate teams meeting at this time. We will begin in the meeting, we will begin in the meeting marked public to call the meeting to order. So does that make sense to everybody? You're gonna, you're gonna drop out of this.
Public meeting first.
You're gonna drop out of this public teams meeting, go to the next public teams meeting, check in, and then we will move over to the private. I know this is really clunky and awkward, but I, but, you know, if we were on the dais, it wouldn't be this way. So please, this concludes, and this will be adjourned for reopening update work session at 5:01 PM. Please close out this public teams meeting, go to the next public teams meeting for our next steps. Thank you.